This conference will now be recorded.
So we'll call it where the Minority Squad, Florida, on January 7th at 6:03 PM with all three members who could be present here in town hall. First order of business is the police department, the police chief is requesting an increase to the detail rate. There's quite a bit of data provided showing that area towns are going up to, many area towns are going to $60 per hour or above. And their request is for this to take effect July 1st, 2025.
And we do, it's the sixth recommends, raise it to 60.
I second that. Any?
Yeah, I just, you know, I just, so the money goes into the general fund, right?
Uh, no, not the detail. Where does it go?
So, so most of the detail goes to paying the people who do the details.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So there's a percentage.
And there's an administrative fee that goes to the town and there's a fee for using the cruiser.
Yeah, I saw.
So if one of the police officers uses a Monterey cruiser, the town gets a fee. But in general, the detail rate goes to the police officer.
And the police officer is about $50 in there, or someone told me, I don't know if that's accurate.
What do you mean? Oh, what do they get out of that rate?
No, they, they don't get the full amount, I don't believe, because there's the administrative fees is part of that, I believe.
Okay, well, it doesn't, I'm just curious.
The town charges $10 of every, 10% of every dollar made by charging them an administrative fee.
So they would get roughly 90%, and as, I think this came up last time that we adjusted this fee. The town is rarely paying the detail rate unless we have an election.
Right.
Usually it's tree and utility companies.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And if we keep ours attractive and in line with other towns, then they can get details. People don't want to work in a town where the detail rates.
They're low, well, they have other options.
There's generally more demand than supply.
Yeah, so there's a motion on the floor to approve the proposal for $6 an hour beginning July 1st, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, that's unanimously approved. The next up is the mattress recycling contract, which is for a year and a half until July.
June, June 30th.
Or 30th, yeah.
June 30th, 2026.
Why does mine say July 15th, 2026?
I, I made a new copy.
Oh.
That was originally, I sent that out and then I.
If you had it, it came in, it's a second one from the TA.
Oh, okay. Okay, so it's a year and a half through, from January 1 to next June 30th.
I thought this one had a, I did see one that was January 1st of this year through July of 2026, but this one doesn't have that.
There was one for July, it's a July 15th of 2026, that's the one that Justin's looking at.
I, I know.
Yeah, sorry, I was.
So I was like, that, that date didn't make any sense to me, so.
I just opened up the one from today, the updated one, it says the term is copy actually, Jan. 1, 2025 to June 30th.
It's dated today, it's 350.
Yeah, in number six term contract.
I know. Oh, it's in number six, it's not at the top, okay.
Yeah, the very top it says January 1st, it's when it like entered in.
There it is, okay, and then 30th, I thought that's what it.
I went and looked and we've used them twice, once in January, I think it was another time in July or August, I think it was. It was about a little over $2,800 for each, each each term.
And as I understand it, the one, the most recent one was 85.
Yeah, it was 85.
And they're charging 23 a unit plus a grand, right?
Yep.
And I think at 85, at 85 at $1,000, it's like $10 per, 12,000? 11 or 76 plus your 20. So 12 plus 23 is 33, so we need to up it to 35.
Wait, why would you want to?
Because it's 23 for the mattress plus another 12, 11 76 for the mattress.
But that's how many you give in the container?
Yeah.
I do value five.
It might, it might actually already be up, now that I'm thinking about it, it's 25.
I think it might have been 30 and we raised it, whatever we raised it to.
Where do you go for the building inspector?
Down the hallway, all the way down the other, on the end of.
They'll be on the right hand side towards the end.
You're welcome. I should know because I brought some recently. What's that? No, I paid the full amount, that's why I should know. Yeah, it's not cheap. That's why whenever people.
Mattresses, mattresses are $35 each.
Yes.
Okay, so we're calling this.
Yeah. So the transfer station committee did a good job setting the new prices.
I think we did on the basis of last year's load, it was that price.
Yeah.
Yeah, it went, it went up a little bit, it only, I think it went up, that $23 went up. That's one of the reasons why this is happening, because they re, they submitted a new contract through comp buys. So this was, this is updating, getting those, those new costs. So it did go up, I think he said 5 or 6%.
The state has a legislation saying we have to recycle this.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
They're forbidden to be in the trash, but they end up there anyway if they're damaged. Which is a good thing, because it's a ridiculous waste.
So I have, I had it for all three, so not really original, I only had one signature, but.
I mean, if 75% of the material is getting diverted to Melancho, that's a heck of a large percent. I thought we already did, oh, no, it was the previous thing. I will make a motion for us to sign the contract for mattress recycling.
I second the motion.
Is there any discussion? Call a vote?
Yes.
And yes, the two names approval, we'll put some signature. Sorry.
No, I thought you were handing it to me.
It's not gonna. All right, next up is fire department staffing.
So I sent you both the, and you also the updated versions. Roger and I met and went over the, the fire chief job description, I had drafted it. And I also drafted the deputy fire chief one and met with Sean and Chris earlier today and did some revisions to it. So there stands what we all came up with. You guys should definitely look at it and see what you think. I tried to keep it, the ones that we found for various other towns, that Roger found for quite a few of them. Span one page to six pages. They go from short, you know, sort of a short description to impossibly detailed, line by line of every single thing. Mostly from towns that have unions because of their contractual obligations. But even Blandford had a six page one that starts out really good and then a third page in with the line by line listing of every single degree, I like started to get me, anxiety attack, like who could ever make this? It's an impossible job. Anyway, I tried to strike a balance to make it inclusive enough, but also not that crazy line by line. Absolutely every single line item in there. I think the, the people involved know their job and we know that they've been doing their job. So I feel like it does enough, but if you guys have such new comments, let's hear them, so I can pick it.
No, I don't think, I don't think you can vary too much detail, you know? If you're hiring a person to be in the position, you know, there's got to be some common sense applied, you know? You know, I, I, I'm fine with it. I love to, but I'm like, okay, this is fine, I don't, if you gotta list everything they have to do, then.
It titles them both interim, because it's to cover between now, you did say when we just finished, to cover between now and July. We also had a discussion about them being what I'll call living documents and that there may need to be changes made to the job descriptions periodically to reflect the changes as they occur. Maybe?
Just, just to say, when you're doing a job description, you have to think you're not writing it for this person, you're writing it for the next person who doesn't know the job.
Except that when you're writing a job description and you're making an ad, that's different.
And making a what?
If you're making it, if you're putting out a job.
For, oh.
If you're advertising a job, that's a different thing than just a job.
But I mean, and you, but you have to remember, it's not for the guy who's here, it's the guy who never been here, doesn't know what it is.
And if you'd like, maybe Roger can print one of these out, if you want to look at it?
Not tonight.
Okay.
That's all, I was working on paperwork all day today.
I think too, we're kind of trying to learn what it is, you know, and how, how the job, because there's, there's really, this is the first job description, right? There's never been a job description.
Right.
So we're trying to learn, like what.
And this is why there never was one, was because it was just like, where do you start?
Yeah, so we're trying to figure that out as we go forward. You know, like example, I think one of the examples, like Susan and I talked about, were sort of the minimum qualifications, which they all have. So we don't know that, we have to talk to Sean.
Yeah.
What that means and try and put those in there. And as we move forward, I think to the point of a living document, we'll just add some things that sort of start to make sense.
First draft is never the last draft.
What's that?
First draft is never the last draft.
Exactly, exactly.
That's all I got. Okay.
But we talked about staffing, you, you guys were going to check to see the budget, take a look at the cost that we talked about last week.
Yeah.
Is, are we okay with that?
I really haven't a chance to dive into it, yes, but I will.
Okay, we need to move on. You have any questions, Sean?
No.
Appreciate everyone here hearing this out and working with us and.
You know, it's, I mean, I appreciate what you and your brother are doing for us and it's a transition and it's got to just be transparent. We just got to keep talking and we'll figure it out and adjust as we go.
Yeah.
You know, the fact is, we got to start heading in that direction. Unless someone starts finding people real quick.
If they fall from this guy, but in a good way.
And it's just got to be.
I'm happy to hear people out, if there's ways to get people. See that happening.
You know, we just got to get started.
Yes. Yes. D-Day is coming and it's coming quicker than I'd like it, but we're getting the process going.
And Sean, Chris are also partway through drafting a firefighter EMT job description, so all for the per DMP.
Okay, good.
That's it, on that.
Anything to, else to approve or just?
I don't, at this point, it's just the two job descriptions and then the third one will be coming along.
No, plus our cheese on the money, they're going to get started.
Yep.
I'll work on the budget, I'll work on the budget, I'm sure.
We should have that per DMP one done for next Tuesday, we will prioritize it Monday, but. Rough draft.
And are you, are you working on the fire chief one, or is that kind of all?
I sent you, I think, the updated draft.
Okay.
So I sent it to them earlier today and they were looking at it.
Okay.
I ironed it all out.
I guess pretty well under control, there's some fight to it here and there maybe, but.
There's anything you need to change, let us know. I, I updated all the things we discussed, including the MGL reference.
Okay, yeah, if you just want to shoot.
Shoot, I should have sent you one too. That's all.
All right. Okay. Sounds like we'll be, we'll have to come back next week on it. We'll make sure.
The next two, three weeks to have agenda items for it.
Administrative assistant, so.
Thanks, Sean.
Laura is willing to come temporarily till July 1st. I only heard back yesterday.
Yeah, you sounded, you shared the.
So I think at this point, I just want to probably have her come in next week, we should officially vote on. Yeah, I want to put her name on the agenda and cross our T's and dot our I's.
Okay.
And, and see if she's willing to start sooner than later, because it's only a six month position to begin with.
Yeah.
And I just wanted, I just told Roger today, I think it's good if we have a job description, even if we don't follow it to a T with this temporary position, just so that we have something on paper of what the position is.
Roger gave us, I think, is, you know, it's good, but if we were ever to post outside, you know, there's just a lot of different skill sets. Now, you know, you know, the reimbursement program, the, you know, the small, you know, there's just a lot of things.
I think that's what, those are probably items that she's, would be dealing with.
Well, she would, but what happens in July, if we say, okay, we want to find somebody.
Yeah.
This kind of detail might scare off someone that could learn some of that.
Yeah.
So I'm just, that's my own, my own, I mean, I just, I like what you did, you know?
Yeah, I tried to, I, I know, but, but some of them, when I sent the document, were highlighted in red.
Yeah, that's why I printed it out.
Those are ones you added?
Well, those are ones that they were actually part of the original job description, that, you know, I got this job description from New Marlboro.
Okay.
And I, I, some of, I wasn't certain how we were going to, to use her skills. Because the things that I highlighted, some of them are more personnel, like payroll based. And I wasn't certain if that was going to be part of that position. So that's why I was like, on this specific, but I, I understand, like what you were saying, Justin, is we might have to just put this together and be like, well, maybe she's not going to do that.
Well, yeah, I think for six hours a week, we're taking a 20 hour a week job description in a slightly larger town with many more miles of roads.
Yeah.
And then we obviously are going to have to cut some things out, so I think the red, we can basically, I don't even want to show her one that says anything about payroll, because.
Yeah, I know.
In these six months for six hours, we just can't.
And that's what I mean, some of it just doesn't pertain to us, like articles for newsletters, I mean, maybe in the future, maybe it might be somebody who could do that for them or through the town. You know, I didn't want to get them bogged down in like ordering supplies, I mean, what happens now is essentially the VPW, like Sheldon comes over and says, oh, we need paper towels. And we need that, but then they, they order most of the stuff themselves.
I think long term, I could see this being developed, one of the things of, of the evaluation that was, that we'll talk about a little bit. But it was just about offloading administrative duties from the town administrators' desk, because it's really easy for you to get bogged down in a lot of these administrative duties. And it might make sense moving forward to kind of do something like New Marlboro has. And offload a lot of those, especially with the highway department, because that is kind of the lion's share of the administrative duties. So.
And there actually, I think there were a couple of things on Jim's list that were already there and I didn't necessarily, like I can't remember which ones they were. Oh, I think like invoice payments, key records, I'm saying, some of those things I didn't, a, a lot of it I incorporated is, is some of his verbiage and the different, like the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, Franklin Regional Council of Governments, just to kind of put it in there as items that, they may not need to be in there, but I just wanted to put them in there.
When I look at this list of about 15, I'm, I'm kind of looking through, I haven't had a chance, I was at work, but I'm looking at probably about five that we're realistically expecting.
Yeah.
If it's six hours a week.
Yes, I, I, I agree.
At least for this temporary position.
And I'm wondering, is, what is, chapter 90 stuff actually listed on here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the fourth, the bottom.
Fourth, the bottom.
But west.
Ah, so it's chapter 90.
So that, I would think that chapter 90 billing, bidding and procurement, outsourced procurement, I think, is what can be probably done in six hours a week. I don't think we're going to get into calls and inquiries from the public or payroll or OSHA compliance.
And like tracking employees, that's why I was trying to sort of separate things out.
Payroll inventory?
Yeah, separating things out that were more personnel based.
So with that, I think tracks employee license and sort of vision would also be on that.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, again, some of that is on Jim's list, the, the document he sent, you know, he, he sent that.
But six hours a week probably isn't going to cover it.
Right, right. So I think moving forward, if it's something that, that, you know, the town wants to think about in that, over there as a position, that those things would be incorporated in there.
Yep.
Okay, so I will put it on the agenda next week to officially hire Laura for, and.
Will, in the meantime, maybe pare this down?
Yes, I can work on that and then we can say at the beginning, and maybe I'll even send it to her, but we can talk about it and give something realistic and acknowledge that it's a temporary, less than six month position at this point, so really.
And six hours a week.
And six hours a week. But.
Because I mean, like something right now, I mean, like general supervision of the highway superintendent, that's not there. And so, it's like, we'll have to figure, figure that out, that's my work.
Let's see. And then the posting for the regular administrative assistant is not.
I haven't done that yet, I'll take care of that.
But we will do.
I've been having a little bit of help currently right now, which is, done some good stuff.
Yeah.
With Frank has helped with some things, Nancy Claydon, but yeah, hope we're better.
Okay. So Lee Davis just sent an email asking about any priorities that we might have. And I didn't know if there's anything that we wanted to call out specifically. I had some ideas floating around in my head, I don't know if it even is going to matter that much, because they were just Monterey, but.
She, I, I don't know. She's also at the bottom of the list now. She was at the top.
But you know what else, though? She's from the neighborhood, you know?
Yeah.
Although, one time I met someone from Great Barrington, out east, and I didn't even know what, where Monterey was.
I, I, when Dennis and I went to that session, she was there, I know she had to talk to her. She was very personal.
That's all right, I met somebody within my first couple of months of working here who thought Monterey was a village of Great Barrington.
That sounds all right. She's on trying to find that stuff, I wonder, did it come?
It came, it came, you, it came at 6, 1 6 at 7:02, are you looking at it? I have the email there forwarding, that's why, yeah.
Just spelled my names and Rodney's.
Okay.
Basically, are there any priorities that we have?
Well, it'd be nice if we had some of this emergency service, some kind of port on that.
Yeah.
You know, and that, and that's, I mean.
Especially on the integration.
And the integration, you know, and someone helps, I don't know what.
With fire departments, because it's like, it's so haphazard and now we're spent, they're spending, wow, $176,000 to study the problem. How about we spend $176,000 to fix the problem and if we start?
It's not rocket scientist stuff.
And it's so off.
Personnel shortage.
Right. But, but their, the answer to it isn't to just entrench the existing system of separate services.
Yeah.
It's a waste of.
So that would be nice.
Emergency services.
I think emergency service would be nice, you know, if she came and listened to the problems, you know, had several select persons with people.
And maybe hear a different perspective than what she's getting from.
Well, Lee also is faithfully committed to what a new firehouse, of course, she's, they haven't even wanted.
And, I mean, they just passed the housing bill, so I don't know, but.
For a more house.
Yeah, so I, I'm not sure what she'd be able to get done on that, but they, you know, they did try to build something in there for communities that aren't major urban centers, so. At least they tried.
Yeah. And some of those regulations are yet to be developed, right, which isn't seasonal communities, so they're still.
Working on it.
They're still.
Yeah, but sometimes, don't they leave it up to like the local jurisdiction to figure that out?
Except like, you know, I, I went to that meeting where they were talking about some of this stuff, you're only allowed that, you know, you cannot require more than parking space. And I said, so if you're a rural community and your roads don't really allow for parking, because some of the roads are extremely narrow and old. What options do we have? She's like, well, you can only require, like, there's no option. They, they, they were like, well, it's really not our problem, I don't know, widen the road, like, she doesn't, they don't have useful suggestions, they're just like, that's what the bill says. So I don't know, at this point, I'm not sure what that person could, you know, we could offer on that topic.
Yeah, but I think you have to plant the seed with her, because they, this is not the first time they've done stuff, that they don't clearly define it.
Right.
I had, had the building code for, because I put batteries in my house and I had to build a room. There was no defined what that room would be. And two, is the engineer from the solar company was telling me one thing and I came up to Donald, Donald looked at me and goes, that ain't going to go. You know, there's a disconnect, you know, their intent is right, but they don't do any details and then a small community like us can't fight it.
Right.
I'd like to see more transportation funding. You know, ways to go north, south in the county, ways to get people out here, Great Barrington out here, ways to get, you know, I think, things like that.
Yeah.
I mean, we have some, but.
More than we used to.
Yeah, it'd be nice to, some more stuff, whether it's the BRTA or the Tri-Town Connect or those sorts of things.
And the actual bus ridership is up.
Yep.
Uh, in the county, and they're very pleased where ridership is and then, there've been some times where they've suspended, there wouldn't be a, be for getting on it.
I mean, the, the people of North Adams will be very upset with me, but I think East-West Rail from North Adams to Boston is boondoggle. And that I'd rather see, you know, $10 million spent in Berkshire County to figure out how to get people moving north and south and within our small communities than how to get a handful of people from North Adams and Williams College to Boston, you know, just stuff like that.
For the committee, I saw the, I saw, they sent a printout today of all the money for like roads and everything. And one that raised my eyebrows, it's now, our Curtis Bridge they have doing in 26, that was the only thing under Monterey. And then, but they talk about a bicycle path between Lee and Stockbridge?
Yeah.
Millions. It's designated for 29, I'm like, wow, what happened here?
Yeah, there's, there's this plan out there, I've seen it, I forget who put it out there, I don't know, Berkshire Regional Planning Commission? Of connecting, you know, all these communities all the way up and down, using old rail trails, all the way from Williamstown.
Well, that's not a common, and then I was just, I looked at the dollar and that.
Yeah, but it's always a lot of money.
It's crazy how much it costs, like it's inconceivable.
Even increasing some road funding, I know we get some, we get the chapter 90.
Yeah, but all, all the communities get chapter 90, so.
It'd be nice to get more.
At the, at the end of the day, I think. At the, at the end of the day, I think, like, so many peak structures are are aging out.
Oh, yeah.
It becomes rather untenable. Like, there's a lot of bridges.
Yep.
In Berkshire County and probably all over the state. Right? A lot of bridges, a lot of culverts. And because of the way the rules are about bridges, it's a lot more money to fix those bridges than it ought to be. Right? This culvert here, we should be able to like drop something in there, want and done, right? Like.
So get rid of environmental regulation.
No, I don't think so at all. I think that the assumption that every site is so particular. Maybe a little, like, why do you have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to study each and every site as though there's nothing similar between the sites? I just don't, I I guess, you know, I'm a scientist and I gotta tell you, I don't think, yeah, there are different sites. But after somebody has looked at site after site after site, I'm willing to bet it should not be taking as many hoops as it does. And that there's probably a bridge, bridges, like you could probably design somewhere fewer than six bridges and culverts. That would serve this purpose that could be pre-built and with some site were dropped in place for a lot less money than.
They have Curtis at three point six million. That is one small bridge.
But anyway.
So I'll get, I'll, I think those are some good priorities. I'll get back to it. Town administrator evaluation. So I know Susan had a meeting with Roger. I had a meeting with Roger.
I haven't talked with him. I said it, we talked a little bit about it today, but we're gonna get together later in the week.
That I I wasn't, I felt like most of what I saw in the composite evaluation was things that we've talked about. Was there anything that anyone felt like Roger, when he went on the board, felt like deserves further discussion?
I didn't, I felt, I felt good about the composite because it felt the way I felt, so, you know, I do, I do.
I was pleased, not, I was pleased to see it seemed both from the numbers and the written word that it sounds like the general feeling was very similar.
There was consensus.
Which is a comfort.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, it's kind of cumbersome to do open meeting, but otherwise we, there's no way that we could know what I, what other board members, where we were all at. And I think what I'm hearing from both of you, and I would agree, there were no surprises. It was pretty much all things that we've talked about, good and bad. And all, all around.
Thanks.
Thank you, Roger.
For undertaking it and for keeping fun.
Almost a year.
Yeah, I know, it's almost a year. I I sit, sit down here, I was sitting here today laughing. I can't believe it's been almost a year. But it's, it's been quite an adventure. Quite an adventure. I appreciate everybody's help and and patience and 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 everything that they brought. It's to the table to help out everything. And even the citizens have been really, really good coming in and and helping out and. And not going too crazy with me. I know. I know I don't always have the answer, but I try to help out as much as I can.
Yeah, I think every month it's just another, another month of your belt.
Yeah.
Just see a yearly cycle if nothing.
Yeah, so.
And you can take experience, buddy. This side, right?
All right, um, shall we get right into town administrator updates?
I I only have a few.
Yeah.
Um, I've noticed, I actually, Don Trico came to me today, just, I don't know if you're aware, but Kutcher's camp was sold. Uh, and a new company, I think they're called the Berkshire Trails Camp now, it's an organization. So I'm gonna, um, his concern was. That other departments might not know, so I'm gonna send out an email to everybody from all the permitting, permitting groups and border health and. Fire, police and all those people, just let them know it happened because. I I don't know how.
There's always a lot going on.
There's always a lot going on and change of hands and, uh, you know, maybe just, just like me getting into a new job, there, it's new people getting into a new, uh. New business. They might not know all the nuances that are involved, so I figured I'd just let people know that they're, that this is happening. This week, I'm, tomorrow, I'm gonna send out department evaluations, so that'll be exciting. I'm gonna send that out to the, uh, to the department managers. And then I'm hoping to have that, my plan is to have those due by, I think, the twenty fifth or the Friday, whatever, the twenty fourth, whatever that is. And then the following week, sit down at this, at this point for me, because most of the people are out. The town clerk, the, um.
DPW.
The DPW. I think I only have like three people I had to actually sit down with myself, so we'll do that. Um, and on the budget, I was hoping to have meetings this week, uh, the select board and finance committee. I'm gonna have to put it out another week. Because I'm running a little behind on some things with with the budget, so I'm hoping to have that done. Have some stuff done this week and get, um, have start, starting meetings next week, but I'll send out an email to everybody and the finance committee to let them know.
Even if you don't have things finalized, I would.
Yeah.
Because the way we even used to do it was we were seeing the budgets for the first time.
Yeah.
At those meetings, so they could bring, the cemetery could, or the, whatever department, the board of health could come and bring their budget. We were seeing the numbers the first time.
Yeah.
So I would say even if, if everything's not ironed out, let's just have those beginning conversations.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start working on that for next week.
And having us schedule the event so we can like, I mean, I don't know if we need to be Survey Monkey or what, but just say, okay, I'll go to these three or whatever.
Yep.
I'm basically out, yeah. It's scheduling, I'm basically out. I mean, I worked Monday to Friday.
Right. Okay.
Yep. So it'll mostly be between.
Susan.
Yeah, Susan and Frank.
If there's anything in the evening.
Finance committees.
If there's anything in the evening. Yeah, I'm happy to try it, but I lost my weekday.
Yep.
I'll start working on that for next week.
I'll send you my schedule. I gotta be.
I was thinking doing, like, we're, we're, we're gonna do it Thursday, Thursday and Friday this week. I'm still thinking the same thing.
Thursday.
Yeah, just getting it all done.
Okay.
And but departments have already given you budgets in many cases?
Uh, not all of them. Yeah, I've gotten budgets back or someone's called, emailed me and said, we're just doing level funding. That's right. Now, the big ones I haven't heard back from are, um, uh, fire department and DPW, but I'm gonna have to probably.
Are you making the DPW budget?
I did put the DP budget together, but I'm gonna have to sit down with Pete at least and figure some things out, so.
Yeah, you bring up, and we talked last week about having a meeting with, maybe have Jim call in. With Pete and then you and I would be there, so maybe try to get that covered. Today I met with the fire chief, Chris and Sean, and we talked about just doing a percentage increase for the contract. Because I felt like they had too much to work on there. We said when we get into the budget meetings, we'll decide on the number. But I said, you know, it can't be a high percentage where everybody looks at it, you know, I'll take a look at what the rate of inflation is. Something like that.
How'd they feel about it?
They felt good. They, they're, you know, you know, they're, you know what they're working on.
Yeah, I know.
They're very receptive. They're, like, believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they did request having that conversation sooner than later. I know also. Going back about six months ago, when Sarah asked me to film, when we renewed their contract. They said we agreed to renew their price, but have you heard back from her at all or?
No, no.
But you asked her for a budget?
Uh, I sent, I sent out, um, spreadsheets to them. Yeah, I haven't heard back from them. I'll reach out.
Well, don't go out of your way.
Don't push it, just to.
The basis of their conversation was that they lost hundreds of thousands.
Yes. Yeah, and lost four years.
That was the.
Yeah, so I haven't, I haven't heard from them yet. I did, I did send it out. I did send the notice.
Because, do you remember that? We talked to her together.
Yep, yep. Said she'd lost like a hundred fifty thousand dollars on.
Because there were so many.
Fixing payroll.
Fixing payroll or some stuff with payroll and. I I don't know if that.
Is payroll fixed?
I I don't know if that was also prior to me starting or from me forward.
Oh, no, 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 no. This is going back basically since we've had payroll. Because you know how many different things, like, we're gonna go back and audit all the highway. Yeah, I mean, that takes time. Yeah, it does. And accountants are, or treasurer, right, like, man, is she billing out at the highest rate when she's talking about it and that? But. But I told her that we would, we would talk.
And to answer your question about payroll, I think we are, uh, we're doing really well. Every so often, just like this past week. We were, I, we, I run into weird little things that I think are holdovers from when we started the process. And things may have been, for some reason, they're just in there.
And or entered wrong.
Or entered wrong. And it just like, like, uh, like, uh, you know, like a rule was just entered wrong. And it's like, I struggle to figure out what's going on, but I've been calling them. And they, they, they get back, like, this, this past Monday, they got back really quick. But sometimes it takes like twenty four hours to get back, which, you know, as long as it doesn't happen, it, it happens at the right time of the pay period, the pay cycle.
And is the result of getting back to you that that problem is resolved and it won't continue in the future?
That's my hope. I owe that.
You see why I'm asking. I think there are still a few things to bring to mind.
Yeah.
Pan elected officials. I don't know if there's anything better that we can do what we're doing now, but what we're doing now relies on Roger remembering it every month.
And so every.
Which isn't really a good system.
So, so every month I, I have a calendar, a calendar of events that says stipends. And so the last Friday of every month, I go back through the month and see if everybody has been paid their stipend.
I mean, I was, should we do it twice a year, quarterly or something? Well, I've talked, been through all the things. It's very complicated because terms end in May and the fiscal year ends at the end of June. So someone could.
Yeah, let's not.
What I have been doing though is you can pre-enter. So I have been doing that with some people. So I've been going in and I pre-enter. Like, if I, if I know their term is gonna be up at a certain time period, I will enter until their.
Their terms.
Their terms.
The other thing I remember going through and trying to figure out payroll in our new system. Forget, were we talking to Sarah or someone? And they were saying at the end of the day, no matter what system you had in place, payroll's just that important. And there's so many variables, you just have to ask them to go through it. We can never eliminate that. I still feel like we rely a little bit too much on one person to kind of tweak the second. Tweak the systems and e- enter for all different kinds of people without even a double check.
Yeah.
Really, so.
The two, the two most complicated, not to linger on this, but the two most complicated departments are DPW in the wintertime and, uh, the police department. Those are really the two most complicated. Fire after that is kinda, it's not really that bad, but that definitely. Police, especially around holidays, it gets kind of complicated. And the DPW in the wintertime is a little wacky because you just gotta kind of.
A lot of OT and.
Yeah, OT and making sure it's going to the right account code. That's really what I'm trying to figure out. Make sure it all goes that way. So, yeah.
All right, we'll move on to unanticipated business.
I think I was supposed to give you a briefing on the personnel stuff.
Yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to get right into it, that's Andy's thing.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Coming, but did you have any specific questions?
I just was trying to see where you guys were at, what was happening.
So we signed the deed last week.
Okay.
We, has it gone to registry yet?
No, not yet.
Okay, hasn't quite gone into registry, but I think at this point, we don't have any money for any. Studies or anything on the property. And as far as I see it, and other Frank and Susan, Roger, feel free to chime in if you feel differently, but. As, as long as we don't have a developed plan, I think we'll just keep the gate.
Closed.
Closed.
Cut the grass.
Okay, so that, that's fine.
Yeah, and keep the status quo.
Keep the status quo.
If you change the lock, you just have to give me the combination or a key.
Yeah.
Uh, cause technically I have the right to go on there.
Yes.
Go through there. Um, and I'm hoping that, I'm trying to finagle, but with all the new building laws, it doesn't make it easy. I can't get a building permit without a well. I can't, I, so it's like a, it's like a catch twenty two. I'm gonna demo the house. So that I could drill the whole well for the, uh, for the hole for the well thriller, but I can't demo, I don't wanna demo without a permit. It's a, it's a, whatever. But, um, so obviously we're gonna be going in and out of there. I, the last I heard, and that, and this could be totally changed now, uh, the lock that was on there was broken. Nobody pays any attention to it anyways. It just was kind of hanging there. That's the way I leave it when I go in and out of it. So if something changes and you guys update, just let me know.
I think we, if there is a broken law, once we get the deed signed or anything, we'll definitely put a good look, good lock on there and keep you in the know on the code.
Whatever it is.
Or key or whatever it may be.
And then, um, you know, like I said, if the community gets formed, I'm happy to sit on that committee or. You know, after thirty some years of design stuff and then, um, obviously having a vested interest. In the property, it would be positive to be on there. And like I've said, I, I, the only thing I'm worried about now, after the whole thing is said and done, is that weird little small. Nook of land that bumps for whatever weird reason. Somebody must have been drunk when they drew that property line, because if you look at it on a map, it goes like this. I mean, it's the most bizarre property line I've ever seen.
Yeah.
Well, what part was in that?
So this is seventy Williams Lane.
Yeah, yeah.
So when you go.
Is it next to your property?
Right, so when you, when you go in the gate.
Yeah.
And you follow the road and then take a left and go in between the two old foundations, which is technically my right way. And hooks around. The property line, rather than just being, you know, a straight line and then maybe bearing a little, it literally looks like a puzzle piece. It, it literally goes in and out and then back around, and then in and out. And then, but then the other weird thing is on top of that puzzle piece. Is a thirty five by twenty five foot parking easement. So I have a right of way easement. That nobody could build on or I always have to have or we have to agree to move or what have you. And then I have a twenty five by thirty five foot parking easement. So what happens when you're looking down on this land is it leaves this tiny. Weird little bump out of land, which technically now is owned by the town, which is fine with me, but, um. Because of the way the houses were all so tight together and so close to the property lines, uh, when I put this house back. Uh, and to make it comply, we're gonna shift it just a little because stupidly before they straightened it out, but that property line, line looked like this, but the house looked like this. So we're gonna straighten it out so it complies. Um, but then literally that little piece of land here. If, let's say it's used and people go and sit on it and hang out all day, they're literally sitting in my backyard. It's a weird little sliver of land. So that's the only piece that concerns me.
Yeah, so I'm gonna send you the, the signed deed so that you have a copy of it.
Okay.
Um, and of course you could access it public, but I'll get it right, I'm getting it to you right now.
Okay.
Um. We are, you may or may not, we're, we're prohibited from changing the property line in any way by the, by the deed. It's one, it was one of the conditions of the donation. We do have the possibility of at some point, if there's a mutually agreeable situation. We can move the right of way, obviously, if, only if we come to a mutual.
Yeah.
Agreement.
Yeah.
Uh, but we can't otherwise change it.
That's fine.
Um, and I think knowing the precarious situation that the right of way is in, in your house. Any committee or firm that we hire to do any planning on it, or whether it's the select board, the parks commission, an ad hoc committee or. An engineer, um, will make sure that they're sensitive to that situation because it's in your best interest and our best interest. That we need, that we, um, you know, are sensitive to that.
Right, then. So do you guys, uh, plan on just maintaining it as it is? Does somebody else go mow it every other week? Or what is the plan?
Until we come up, I think that's the plan, until we come up with a way to make a plan.
And just wait, I think we're a ways away from making a plan. It's, it's not gonna happen overnight.
Status quo. So Dean was having Scott mow it every other week and then the lock on the, on the gate. And I think that's gonna be, if people ask, oh, can we go? And do anything? No, the gate's closed. We don't, we're maintaining the status quo as far as I understand.
That's right.
I mean, I think from a liability standpoint, until we've dealt with the holes and the.
We, we can't let people start using it. You know, you have to find parking and all that stuff. And we're, we're trying to have people, you know, people check on it periodically.
Well, I'm there. Well, I'm there, I'll check for stuff, until I have a problem. Um, but it was property. Uh, it was only when there wasn't a gate that there was a problem, we had a mattress, we had a couch, we had a dining room table.
Oh, no.
We would have been like, everything, you drive by, you're like, what the heck is that? It's crazy.
Well, thanks for coming into chat and we'll definitely keep you, keep you talking, I'm getting the deed to you as we speak.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
And, and, uh, we'll go from there, but status quo.
Okay.
For now.
Sounds good.
We'll fix the lock if it's broken.
Yeah, whatever, just let me know.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Have a good day. Yeah.
Roger, have you heard anything from Chris?
Um, um, I actually saw Chris on Friday.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he was, um, waiting out here in the car for, uh, his, his, uh, his one of his.
One of his kids.
One of his kids for the bus. And, um, he, um, he seemed, he seemed in good spirits. He had just finished, he was on the last week of his, uh, second week of the chemo, so he was all done with his chemo. And, uh, he supposedly was going to do some more testing today and get results tomorrow and then go from there. So, but, but I've, um, like I said, he, he looked, he looked, he was in good spirits, so it was good to see him. But, cause I, it was good to see him out, out and about, and someone else had seen him at the post office the, the week before, like Friday before. So he's, he's getting out.
Okay.
And you have, you haven't heard anything further about the, uh, OML complaint?
I saw an email response to our response from the original complainer. And it was basically, I think, just saying he wants to be dealt with at the, um, well, at the next level. You know how they, how they move forward.
And then maybe you can tell them they're within a violation and you can be done with it.
So I haven't looked to see if we're officially on the list of, uh, on the state website, but he has a few pending there, so. That, I didn't get, oh, that makes sense, I withdraw my complaint, it was more like, I request to appeal this decision. Or this, to look further into this matter, but I haven't heard anything back. Uh, in my previous experiences, um, they, it takes a few months. And then they just get back and they say, you're either not in violation and then you don't need to do anything, or you're in violation and here's what you need to do. So. Okay, um, yes, you wanted to talk about personnel policies.
So I met with Linky again, we did the next thirteen policies, alphabetically from conflict of interest through equal pay. There's a lot of policies. Um, the only one I had any concerns about that I think that SB will eventually look at when she finds some language was the conflict of interest, um, one, and it was specifically, there's language in there concerning, um, you can't supervise or basically have anything to do with any member of your family.
Yeah.
And I pointed out that the fire department in many small towns regularly violates that. Um, and she's like, yes, that is absolutely true, it's even true in my small town. So she's, she thinks there's language that they have to deal with the, sort of the same sort of thing when you can just, um, acknowledge that you have that situation. And she's gonna work with Mary to come up with language to address that particular issue. Um, as well as a non, the same sort of thing in nonprofit. In their sense, we've got the fire company and the fire department.
Um, so the other thing I wonder with conflict of interests, because we've, it's come up over the years, is do we want to basically just leave it at Massachusetts State Ethics Law and not go not try to reinvent the wheel in Monterey for what our policies are, just say, people should know and be familiar with Massachusetts Ethics.
Okay.
Conflict of Interest Law and follow them and maybe just say, you know, by state law, all employees need to do the training every two years and receive the packet of information every year, which now all happens online. Um, I don't know, I just feel like it's a, it's a can of worms once you start talking about difficult situations like that. And also, there's this whole framework already set up for us at the state level. I saw inter, so our law firm sent out, uh, they send out their monthly newsletter. And there was an employee out east somewhere, of course, that refers to east, and, uh, and there was this interesting little article, it was, I think, a building inspector that basically had done something definitely against the conflict of interest law, where they did something in the system that related to an application at standing. The town disciplined them and put them on unpaid leave. And then, when the state ethics, when they found out, like a year or two later, the state ethics commission was investigating them, they put them on paid leave again. So then, when the state ethics commission finally made a determination, they actually, I wanna say, didn't give the employee any, um, any discipline. It is that you've already been disciplined on the matter. So I just, all to say, and maybe Colin Center will have some thoughts on this, and maybe it's worth reaching out to town council. If, cause I, I think that you should have a, anytime, in my opinion, that there's questions with the personnel policies about legality, they should go right to town council. Um, since I just came from Herndon, maybe Donna would have some insight into, you know, if it's a state ethics concern, it should really just go straight to state ethics and, uh, the town shouldn't also take disciplinary action, other than maybe put someone on, you know, leave while an investigation is ongoing.
And I think when we were talking more in terms of, you know, there are situations where you had, you know, can vote on something as long as you announce a potential conflict and say that you don't think it's a conflict. Um, this is like, you're not allowed to hire, and like, so the fire chief technically is in charge of all the personnel in the fire department. But if they're not allowed to have any to do with any relatives, and there are multiple members of a family who are firefighters, that's an issue, right, and that's what that thing would be.
Yeah.
Addressing. So, um, that's not so much a, like a state-based current ethics, like that's a, are, is this gonna work for us and can we do it? Is it legal for us to do it? And if we're, if we, if it is, what do we have to do to make sure it doesn't become a prosecutable offense or, you know what I'm saying, like?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything that we can put in our employee policies that will override the existing state ethics.
I, I'm not suggesting we do.
Yeah.
I'm saying we should be clear on what, because this situation, it is not unique to us, or even to Massachusetts.
Yeah.
So I have zero question that it has been dealt with, and maybe Donna is exactly the right person to help us figure out what do we need, how do we handle this situation?
Yeah.
Do we need to have rules for it and what should those will be, or does the person just have to announce that they're doing, what do we do?
Yes, and I, I think, I, I would just take it right, honestly, in this one, I would just take it right to Donna, because instead of, if we, if you spend time and, and Colin Center spends time trying to craft and then Donna says this, I would just go to her first. In this instance, it, it oddly going to the lawyer may save time and money.
Yeah, about the same.
Yeah, it might be unique, but there you go. So, and that's.
Everybody's gonna have a opinion, but you need what the lawyer says.
Yeah.
And it's something, something in my brain is just telling you that this, that it came up before. And maybe it was when we were doing, I don't know what it was, but just go to her.
Yeah.
And, and go from there.
I feel like maybe this, the issue of that has come up before, but it certainly has come up with you with relatives.
Yeah.
Um, this is a specific thing where.
Speed dial.
Right. Specifically a thing where if you have multiple firefighters and the fire chief has family members, it's an issue. But I, I think that, I, I personally don't think it's a good idea to discourage the family members of the fire chief from participating in firefighting. Or, yeah, it's just.
Stowe actually, the town of Stowe actually has a nepotism policy.
For the fire department or in general?
Just in general.
I mean, I think there's a lot of reasons to do that. But there's also reasons to weigh it in circumstances.
No, they, they talk about that a little bit, the procedure for it.
Oh, for how to?
Yeah, how to, kind of, kind of, you know, it might be worthwhile just.
That's Vermont, right?
I think, I don't know if it's Stowe, Mass or Stowe, Stowe.
There might be a Stowe, Mass, I don't know.
Yeah, Stowe, Stowe, Mass.
Stowe, Mass, go figure.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they, they have, it might be worthwhile just looking at that. Because I know that in the conflict of interest rules, you can't, a- as a employee, you can't participate, like, uh, you know, like say, for example, you know, uh, you had a family member who was getting a permit or was busy or something like that, you can't participate in things like that or financial matters, but. You're right, people hire their kids all the time.
Well, and the tricky part would be if you've got a fire chief, a fire chief and a deputy fire chief that are actually family members. Who takes over the fire inspection for a family member's building if it's a large family? It starts to draw.
And it's your son's building.
You have to have.
Who is the A M T guy?
Captain who takes it and isn't a family member, I don't know, but it's, I don't know. Um, as, other than that, all the other policies, the like biggest change we had was like a spelling error or changing city to town. If it was a policy that they have, yeah.
Do you know, so, do you know how many, there's a lot of policies.
At the rate of like somewhere between like twelve and fourteen, I size this another three minutes. Look at your face.
Fifty.
It's insanity. Like, look at the, did, did you even see the list, I mean, it's, it's crazy here. I'll show you what I'm talking about. Every time I do it, I, I start to cry, it's just crazy.
Should we start?
Here, here's the list, please.
No, I guess.
It's that whole ball, then.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, pretending to.
Uh, I think I'll send you unanticipated business. No, all right, so, minutes twelve seventeen.
I think I sent you my pretty small changes, like, I don't know if you're led by what I said. The only real substantive thing I had is that on the K C Center Pavilion Grant Funding Letter.
Yeah.
The parenthetical was confusing, I didn't really, and I'm not sure that my suggested change fixes it, I think I didn't, I wasn't clear what it was meant to say, so I wasn't sure it had a fixer.
No, it is definitely, I didn't know, it's complicated. Also, eighty-one.
I thought I remembered the twenty-nine, but then.
Twenty-nine is right, but it would be fifty-two.
Oh, fifty-two, right, okay. But even so, I'm not sure the actual wording of the rest is correct.
Oh, no, you're right, like, it's confusing. It, I didn't know how to, I was writing it this morning.
Right.
I didn't.
And I'm not, like, so I'm not sure on exactly.
Dennis explained the new proposed funding of the town local match, eighty-one thousand will come from existing funds. Maybe we just want to ask about it from where.
Right. With, uh, with sixty-five thousand to be raised.
Yeah.
That, that's maybe another choice. Um, and then down in review personnel policies rewrite, uh, full-time standard work week, more flexible four hours per week, but not defined by particular hours, I added.
Yeah.
Um, and then there was a discussion about who should be the primary and secondary court for any discrimination.
Yeah.
I don't remember what our conclusion.
Um, I think it's town administrator, select board chair, but that's obviously.
I can probably find it.
The opinion of the select board chair, um. I think when. I can't, I think that's what makes sense.
Yeah, I, I think it does make sense, and I think that is what we decided on there, but I couldn't remember what happened, and I remember you had watched it where it's. But I just think it should say what our decision was, right, I'm just saying we discussed it.
Let's see. So, I would say the board agreed that the town administrator will be the primary court and the select board chair will be the secondary court.
Yeah. And the last one is down in a couple paragraphs under town administrator updates, Roger updated the board that the police chief is helping to manage, manage with any, the alarm permits for this year's cycle.
Great.
Just stupid type of thing, and that's it. So I will move that we through the minutes of twelve seventeen twenty-four as amended.
That's second motion.
We'll call a vote.
Yes.
And yes.
Always thank you for letting us.
Any comments, questions from the public?
They all left.
That's why I, I, it's, it's, uh, I did the educational contract negotiation meeting, it was only ten minutes. Uh, Bob and Sheffield's gonna do it and the town administrator will be the backup. So I wouldn't know, but the person who was on the call said that, I guess we're having a change on the town administrator there, but just said the position and not a name.
And Sheffield?
Mm-hmm.
Have they found somebody?
No, well, you, what you do, you have, you have a five.
She's been the TA for a long time.
I, I'm just sure who it is, but.
You did.
I heard she was.
Yeah, and, um, so that's.
I heard she was actually, I, I heard she had stayed on for a little bit longer than she was, that she wanted to, like, till the end, end of the year.
Right. And it's this year.
Yeah, I think it was actually end of calendar year.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I think she gave her, was supposed to leave like back in September, October, maybe.
And they haven't hired you for some.
They haven't found anybody, so, yeah.
It's always one of those things where you, you know, they, it would be great to have overlap, but nobody ever wants to pay for two.
They have an assistant.
Jeff's?
Yeah, so.
So I don't know what, how that relates, but I do know, as opposed to a lot of small towns, they actually do have that.
Yeah, sometimes you're like the HR and use some other stuff, I think that's what Greg Berington does. Greg Berington's assistant is actually the HR director or something like that as well.
But isn't it?
Well, I don't know, that's a field that I picture. Well, that's right, they did, yeah, I, yeah. She was working there, was she, from here?
Yeah, she worked for a while, like, about a year ago on a tow truck.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion adjourned?
Yes.
A second.
All right, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and that's.
Seven eleven.
Adjourned, seven.
Eleven.
Frank.
Seven twelve on the computer.
Could you give me a ride home?